Away, welcome to the council meeting of Wyndham City Council is Tuesday the 18th of August 2020. This council meeting is being undertaken in line with the COVID-19 Omnibus Emergency Measures Act 2020, which provides for council to meet and is deemed to be open to the public if the meeting is streamed live on the internet. In the spirit of reconciliation, before we begin this meeting, I acknowledge the peoples of the Kola Nation as the traditional owners of the land on which Wyndham is being built and we pay our respects to elders past and present. I will now proceed to read out the opening prayer and welcome. We pray for guidance in the council's decision-making to achieve the best outcome for the people of Wyndham. I'd also like to acknowledge councillors and staff that are here this evening. And finally, I now understand that during the council meeting of 2 June 2020, during rigorous debate, I said words that I now understand were hurtful to councillor Barlow and I apologise to him. Now move to the next item, item two, apologies and requests for leave. Madam CEO, do we have any apologies or requests for leave this evening?
No, Mr Mayor, there are nil this evening, thank you.
Okay, with that in mind, we'll now proceed to item three, declaration by councillors of disclosure of conflict of interest and/or conflicting personal interests in any item of the agenda. Do I have any conflicts of interest of councillors that is being declared this evening? Councillor Marcus, how about you?
Yes, Mr Mayor, I have a conflict of interest in the item 6.2.1, Adoption of Council's Annual Plan and Budget 2021. Item number one, which is the Warribit Catalyst Site, so I will have to zoom out for that one item. And then hopefully you will make sure that I'm zoomed in for the rest.
Certainly will, councillor Marcus, thank you for noting that and I'll acknowledge that at the item. With no more declarations, we'll now proceed to the next item. Item number four, Confirmation of Minutes of Previous Meeting. The minutes of the council meetings held on Tuesday, the 4th of August 2020 and Tuesday, the 11th of August 2020, as prepared and circulated, be confirmed. So I'm asking for a mover for that item, councillor Maynard, do I have a second, councillor Hooper? I'll now proceed to a vote, as for the purposes of this evening, go through every councillor to confirm for or against. So when I ask you to confirm, please advise at that point. Councillor Rahn, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Thank you councillor Hooper. Thank you councillor Khan. You'll need to state it.
For, Mr Mayor, for four.
Thank you, okay, I'm also in favour councillor Barlow.
Four.
Thank you councillor Villa Gonzalo.
Four.
Councillor Gibbons.
Four.
Thank you councillor Maynard. Just on mute councillor Maynard.
Sorry, for, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Marcus.
In favour.
And councillor Shaw.
Four.
Thank you, that item is carried. Item five, Deputations and Presentations, there are nil. We'll now proceed to the next item, six, Officers' Report, 6.1.1, the response to petition of February 2020, cyberbullying and harassment on social media platforms. The report and the recommendation is outlined on page eight and there are nil attachments. I need a mover councillor Khan, do I have a second, councillor Villa Gonzalo? Councillor Khan, do you wish to speak to the item?
Yes, Mr, yes, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
Just one second, Mr Mayor, I'm just trying to bring my notes, I've made some notes.
That's fine, your five minutes are ticking though.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Mr Mayor, was this, this was for noting, wasn't it?
No, it's to adopt a position councillor Maynard, that's what the resolution says. Councillor, councillor Khan, continue, thank you.
Just one second, Mr Mayor, I'm just trying to log into my notes, just that my computer will be slow in a second, Mr Mayor. I know they've got it, was it here already and it looks like by mistake and have closed it in a second, sir. There we go.
A minute has elapsed councillor Khan.
Just in a second, it's okay. Mr Mayor, I'd like to speak on the cyberbullying, it's an important issue to everybody because what we have voted last OCM, it was an important issue. Due to the COVID-19, they forced the word into the biggest experiment in a remote working and education in the history, revealing how fundamental digital technologies do the way we work, socialise and access key information. But it has also shown how online content can be weaponised to abuse people. Nearly four in 10 adults, Mr Mayor, almost 38% reported a negative online experience during the COVID-19 restrictions in Australia. And there is a website called eSafety Complaints and that is a data where you can go and see how important it is. Mr Mayor, the young people from culturally and individually background, diverse background are a greater risk of the cyberbullying. More than half also announced the online hate, including seeing the racist comments, almost 56% and hateful comments about culturally or religiously grew 53%. Around 14% of the adult of age between 18 to 65 are estimated to have been a targeted online hate speech directed at them and basic of the race, gender, sexuality, ethnicity, religion, a number of other ways, Mr Mayor. Can I say, Mr Mayor, in Wyndham, Mr Mayor, some of our elected members are also group members of these groups and enjoying this membership. They should be discouraging anyone who try to harm online using wrong content on Facebook to promote the bad behaviour. Mr Mayor, there are groups in Wyndham community on Facebook pages, they love to make fun of anyone, they do not care. They, but they put negatively comments against another person and they enjoy. They feel pride themselves putting other people down, Mr Mayor. They are only making fun of the number of people from diverse background, including the lot of people from different, different age and the gender and male or female, obviously, mainly born from overseas or also the local people. They will question them such as, why are you running for X, Y, Z, whether it's a council actions or any issues and make fun of it. Now, Mr Mayor, in Wyndham, there are active groups created by man and woman. And I have been told by lead petitioner, Mr Roy Singh and such other members, sorry, Mr Mayor, he have been harassed by a number of people, particularly a woman. And this is the same on the who involve in hate speeches and spreading around. In my personal view, Mr Mayor, the community members report this kind of behaviour to the local police as been advised in council report. Mr Mayor, Wyndham City Council is a multicultural, multicultural society and people those involved and ask their friends to go on online or they should be discouraging. And I think, Mr Mayor, council have taken a great step last OCM, giving advice them and giving online training. I will be requesting every councillor who support this motion and if we happen to be any touch with anybody, encourage people to use a proper Facebook, but do not harass anyone, do not abuse anyone. Because within modern technology, modern society, this kind of a tool such as Facebook should be used for the betterment, for the wellbeing, not to harass someone by using a content which hides what you do normally.
Your time is now up councillor Khan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, look, I will, I will have, I will encouraging everybody to be stop the bad behaviour and.
Thanks for that, okay. Now councillor Villa Gonzalo, do you wish to speak to the items, the second?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, three minutes.
I support this, the response with the petition and I echo what councillor Khan has said. Almost 50% of our population, Mr Mayor, is in Wyndham, have a migrant background. And in 10 to 15 years migrants will be the majority in Wyndham. That is how our demographics are changing. Wyndham is doing very well as far as integrating our migrant population into Australian society. Council in the last few terms have implemented many excellent programmes, which included the building blocks, the district advisory portfolios and the social and economic inclusion, among others. As I've said in the last OCM, Mr Mayor, council has been leading this sector and has been innovating in the social inclusion and active citizenship sector. Cyberbullying is all about social exclusion and it needs to stop. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Villa Gonzalo, councillor Barlow, you have three minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, I'm supporting the recommendation, just like I supported councillor Khan's motion at the last OCM, you know, bullying of any form, of any colour, any creed, of course, obviously, should not be, should not be acceptable in a civil society. I was going to call a point of order on councillor Khan because he made an accusation that there are elected members on this council that are part of these groups. And I didn't call a point of order, but I suggest that if councillor Khan knows who these councillors are, he should mention them and not just make accusations in a public forum that may or may not be true. And I'm quite happy for him to ring me privately and mention to me who these elected people are, so we can do something about it. And otherwise, I think it's a comment that shouldn't have been made. And, but I am supportive of this, my cultural diversity portfolio has proven over the last four years that with a number of meetings and groups, even last weekend, I did a Zoom meeting with, with people from around Melbourne about integration and being involved in the Australian way of life. I think it, it went really, really well, but I am concerned about accusations, thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Barlow, councillor Hooper, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, look, I'm supportive of this motion as well from a broader context. We know from schools in the area that cyberbullying has definitely taken an uplift in Wyndham due to COVID-19 and, well, some kids being very creative with how they go about their bullying. We've seen abusive texts and emails on the rise, our schools have certainly created alerts to parents about this issue. And it's a significant issue too. One in five Australian young people have reported being socially excluded, threatened or abused online. 55% have sought help from their parents, 28% from friends, 38% blocked offending content online. So I think, given how wide it is amongst young people, having a social awareness campaign by councils that actually alerts kids as to strategies, as to what they can do, reporting to police, that's a, you know, when it's serious, that is certainly a big one. It is a criminal act and should be treated as such, I think is quite important. So I look forward to seeing how this unfolds, forget support tonight, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Hooper, okay councillor Shaw, three minutes.
Oh, well, thank you, Mr Mayor, I'll be quick, good to see the report in tonight, but I feel like we discussed this extensively last week following councillor Khan's notice of motion, here we are again, a very important issue. I think we all agreed with that last week, there are a number of items that we all agreed that were going to happen. But good to see this report, but again, I feel like we're just all repeating ourselves from all the things that were discussed last week. So I look forward to endorsing this and talking about some other items on the agenda tonight, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Shaw, as every speaker is in favour of the item, there is no right of reply, so we'll proceed to a vote. Okay councillor Rahn, you're first.
For it.
Thank you councillor Hooper.
Four.
Councillor Khan.
For it.
Thank you, so am I, councillor Barlow.
Four.
Councillor Villa Gonzalo.
Four.
Councillor Gibbons.
Four.
Thank you councillor Maynard.
Oops, four.
Councillor Marcus.
In favour.
Okay, councillor Shaw.
Four.
Thank you, okay, we'll now move on to the next item, 6.2.1, the Adoption of Council's Annual Plan and Budget 202021. Understand councillor Marcus, you're seeking to leave the room for this item, okay. So what I'll do first of all is just go through the reports, so page nine to 15 is the report recommendations and on nine to 12, the attachments on three to 111. Before we proceed, councillor Marcus, are you happy to disconnect, given you've declared the conflict? Hang on, you're just on mute councillor Marcus.
Make sure you bring me back in time for the budgets discussion.
I can assure you we would be doing that, you have my word.
You also must understand that we've not got good internet and zoning in and out, I may take time to get back in, okay?
That's fine, we're happy to wait, welcome to online technology for everyone. Okay, thanks for that councillor Marcus. Okay, so just to be clear, this motion relates to councillor Marcus declaring a conflict. It relates to item one only, that the following capital works projects be accepted as part of the proposed annual budget and plan for 202021 and that relates to the catalyst site, okay, everyone. I'll now ask for a mover for this specific item, please. Councillor Barlow. And anyone, yeah councillor Khan, thank you, okay councillor Barlow, do you wish to speak to the item?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thanks, councillor Khan, are you speaking to the item? And you're on mute.
Um, no, no, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you, as there are no other speakers, I'm going to proceed to a vote on this particular section. I'll now proceed to roll call councillor Rahn.
Four.
Thank you councillor Hooper.
Four.
Councillor Khan.
Four.
I'm also in favour councillor Barlow.
Four.
Councillor Villa Gonzalo.
Four.
Councillor Gibbons. Just have to state it councillor Gibbons, four. Okay councillor Maynard.
Four.
Thank you and councillor Shaw.
Four.
Okay, that item has passed, what we'll now do is proceed to get councillor Marcus in. So I just ask as everyone bears with us as we do that, okay, thank you.
Mr Mayor, I have amendment, so let me know when should I.
Certainly will councillor Khan, thank you. Just waiting for councillor Marcus to come back. Okay councillor Marcus has now returned, thanks for that Heather. We're now proceeding to the next section, now as councillor Khan has outlined, he intends to put an amendment. Now, before we hear from him in terms of the amendment, I'm going to seek a mover for points two to 20 of the recommendation first, a second as well, then I will proceed to the amendment, okay. So councillor Maynard, do I have a second for the original resolution? Yeah, okay councillor Barlow, thank you. All right, great, now, before we move to debate two to 20, councillor Khan has indicated he wishes to move an amendment. So I intend to deal with the amendment first. For the purposes of completeness councillor Khan will ask you to read out the amendment, then I will seek a second. Then if you get a second out, then we'll proceed to debate on that item, okay. So if you can please read that out first, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The council COVID-19 hardship policy be extended to including the following rate assistance to the household for the 2021 financial year. Number one, a rate rebate of $50 per household for those eligible to receive a state government pensioner rebate. Number two, a rate rebate of $100 per household for those recipient of Jobkeeper, which is subject to an application process. The application process, including information on eligibility, will be communicated to the rate payers in their 2021, 21 financial year rate notice and thoroughly any other methods deemed, 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 deemed appropriate by the CEO.
Thank you very much councillor Khan, do I have a second for the item councillor Shaw, okay. Councillor Khan, you have five minutes to speak to the item, your time starts now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, just in a minute, I'll just bring my notes. Thank you, Mr Mayor, fellow councillors, we know the impact of COVID-19 are being felt across the world and here in Wyndham, we are not exempt. More than 43% of our local businesses have applied for the Jobkeeper. While we do not data the number of actual workers on Jobkeeper, looking at Australian data, we estimated that at least 35,893 employed residents are on Jobkeeper. There are residents doing it tough here in our community with many struggling to make ends meet. I seek support from my fellow councillors this evening and is an amendment that seeks to provide targeted support to those rate payers which are on Jobkeeper in the form of $100 rebate on their rate bill. If successful, I ask that we establish an application process to make this possible, ensuring that it apply to those who needs it the most. This amendment also allow the automatic rate relief, $50 to pensioners who are eligible for a state government rebate. We, as a council, have already done some great work to provide relief to our residents. For example, our 5 million Win Local Economic Support Package has provided $2 million in the form of grant to 285 local businesses. We have also waived fees and charges to the businesses to the value of $1 million and deferred. The rate almost households and businesses who reached out us and are struggling to pay their rates totaling 1.27 million. We are one of the fastest growing council, Mr Mayor, in Australia and taking into account the rate make up 70% of annual revenue, you can understand we get 70% rate, Mr Mayor. We need responsible in way we provide additional support, the $100 rebate for those on Jobkeeper and additional support for pensioner is responsible, the council has always supported those indeed. The amendment seeks to build on our proven track record in this, in that space. Mr Mayor, through this pandemic, we often say we are all in this together. A rate rebate for those most in need shows that we mean, we mean it. Mr Mayor, can I also say now, my fellow councillor, last time we requested and councillor Henry Barlow has said that, Mr Khan, you have to come up with the, with the maths, so now I can request to him now personally and other fellow councillors to consider that, to consider that you are supporting 1,000 residents and those people who now need you. If you ignore, you're ignoring those ones who need it. So this is a time, this is an opportunity now, you can support and this is not too much. We have done the maths now, we come back now and I would like to say thank you councillor, me and Shaw and yourself and other councillor, those who have really worked hard on it and understood what it means to be in a budget. So it's not going to make a big hole, Mr Mayor, in those words now, I would request again for my fellow councillor such, everyone, everyone, please support, this is something we can afford, it's something we can do it, it's not going to make a big hole in a budget. So I look forward to hear comments, mate, from the fellow councillors, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Khan, councillor Shaw is the second, do you wish to speak?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor, just a couple of comments from me. Thank you councillor Khan, yes, we actually, this council actually has a good hardship policy, one that, you know, to support rate payers who need assistance during difficult times and this is a difficult time for, for many people in our community. I do believe that this amendment strengthens that policy in a responsible way, supporting those in our community going through very difficult times during COVID-19. It's quite targeted to those that actually need it, it's not a blanket $100, but certainly designed to support those through our hardship policy that will need assistance during this time, I support the amendment, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Shaw, are there any other speakers to the item? Okay, there being not, we'll, oh, yep councillor Marcus, you have three minutes, thank you.
I'm speaking against.
Yep, that I understand, you can proceed to speak, three minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Wyndham together, I'm glad you mentioned that in Taj, we are all in together. Sadly, what is before us tonight is not in togetherness. It is dividing and it will discriminate against many of our wonderful citizens that live in this city. Four weeks ago, I voted for everybody across the board to get a relief, but that was turned down. This motion has come to us tonight without any discussion to me at all and I feel very, very angry about it. I promised my rate payers if elected four years ago that I would work for financial responsibility, fair rating system for all of our residents. I would listen to all residents' concerns and I would be determined to keep the council transparent and provide financially, financially responsible budgets. I received the highest vote of any candidate at those elections and now I cannot go back on my promise to supporting every rate payer in this city. I am working as a mental health ambassador with people, listening to their, their problems, they're, they're too afraid to speak out. What are we doing for them? Self-funded retirees, their income slashed to lower than being on a pension. They are lucky if they are receiving three to four percent on their investments, but they pay full price for everything. Wonderful employees who have taken 20 to 30% cut because they want to keep their jobs. Employees who are happy to work three or four days a week to keep their jobs, nothing for any of them. Landlords who are mum and dad investors who have waived it, not deferred, waived rent for their tenants and that saved thousands of dollars, what are they now going to get when many of them have empty shops? All of these people do not qualify for any relief and that is why I cannot support this amendment tonight. I am for fair to every rate payer in our city. The two governments have been very generous in supporting many rate payers, but coming out in about six, six weeks. Right, council will need to look closely at our budgets because it is unknown and there will be much more stress and anxiety. If the pandemic continues, council will have to have more financial assistance. We only supported 285 businesses out of 17,000 and many missed out and I know if we are, if they're going to support. We advocate jobs, jobs and more jobs. If we don't support all more of these business people, unfortunately, we will have more unemployment. This is going to be a nightmare to administer because how are we going to really add who's on Jobkeeper and not? What about the job seekers, why aren't we helping them too? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Marcus, councillor Barlow, three minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, this is the third motion, trying to give a small discount to some rate payers and I believe it's the, it's the worst of the three. This notice of motion has not been discussed by, by council. We have not received the financial cost and the number of residents that would be eligible for this rebate. There is no eligibility guidelines, there is no meeting planned for the elected representatives of this council to decide who should get a minor rate cut or not. All this motion is doing is leaving it to the CEO to decide with the chief financial officer how this money will be spent and who gets it. officer how this money will be spent and who gets it. This is, in my view, a dereliction of our duty as councillors. As I said earlier, there are no eligibility guidelines discussed. It is going to be left to the CEO and the CFO. A very good political ploy, because if this goes pear shaped and there's many complaints, the CEO and the CFO, the blame lays with them. We hand over the money with no responsibility and no guidelines. An example, a couple of both their names on a rate notice. The husband is on Jobkeeper and his wife is actually working and gets a salary. Are they eligible? A family is on Jobseeker, no money, um, extra coming in, um, but by this motion, the people on Jobseeker do not get the $100.
Councillor Barlow, I'll ask you to stop, sorry. Uh, councillor Khan, what is your point of order?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, it's regarding the, the council is misleading the chamber regarding the clear guideline, it clearly says that Jobkeeper and pensioners. So you cannot make up a Jobkeeper, you have to prove it you are Jobkeeper, and it's a government proven, true programme. So also with the pensioners, you can't just say I'm a pensioner. So there is a guideline, Mr. Mayor, you just need to understand.
Thank you. And I must say, councillor.
I take on board.
But, oh, hang on, councillor Barlow, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I take on board, but, uh, the, the guidelines are going to be done in the future, not what you think now. So if I can just start again, I'm starting my clock as well. Okay, um, a family is on Jobseeker, no $100 for them. Someone who owns a house in Windham under their name and rents it out, they however live in Melbourne with their partner. They are on Jobkeeper, but the partner is still working. Is the Jobkeeper eligible? Do we know that they do not live here? When they get the $100 saving, they will spend it in Melbourne and not in Windham. No value to our economy. We cannot allocate rate payers' money without a plan, without guidelines, without eligibility guidelines, without councillor responsibility. We have none of those on this notice of motion. We give away 1.2 million unallocated funds from the 5 million Wind Local Economic Support Package. Or what happens if stage four continues? What happens when we all get our rate notices in a few weeks and hundreds, if not thousands of rate payers and businesses come to us as part of the Wind Local Economic Support Package? And we've spent the unallocated funds instead of holding on to it to help those in dire need later? This is an irresponsible motion. I know people need help, but this motion does not even take into account residents who are even worse off. I cannot vote for this motion, especially in an election year.
Uh, thank you very much, councillor Barlow. Councillor Hooper, you have three minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I'm speaking against this motion as well tonight. Uh, when the ideas came to us previously, I was concerned about this blanket approach uh, that was to provide a hundred dollar discount to, you know, random citizens. This is, this, I agree with the others that have spoken, Henry and councillor Barlow and councillor Marcus, in respect to the unfairness of this particular proposal. There are people in our community who applied for the business grant, who missed out on it. Now, no, speaking to them, they're going to be closing their doors in a matter of weeks. The, the impact that COVID-19 has had on our community is yet to be seen. We do not know what the tsunami is going to be of all the pain that's going to come about. And to actually whittle away our money on a frivolous exercise is just short sighted and absolutely not going to help anyone in the long run. We've got to make sure that when we look at case by case, help, you know, we've got the help mechanism in place, we've got the hardship policy.
Mr. Mayor, point of order?
Okay, sorry, councillor, I had to stop the clock so you're not having your time eaten up. Okay, councillor Khan, what is your point of order?
A council is misleading a chamber and saying this rebate is not going to help anyone. I disagree. It's misleading, it's clearly said it's going to help pensioners and Jobkeepers, those are great payers of the city. It's a misleading statement to make.
Yep, I agree, actually, councillor Khan, that's a fair argument. Councillor.
My friend, but I will go with that as the ruling of the mayor. However, a hundred dollars to an individual for a year works out to be less than $36 a quarter. If someone is that desperate, there are many, many avenues for help, and I'd strongly recommend that they pursue them. At this, this point in time, whittling away our cash reserves.
What of order, Mr. Mayor? What of order, Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Khan, what is your point of order this time?
Councillor, councillor Tony Hooper is misleading a chamber and referring those people need a rate rebate. There are many options. He can, can he, can he tell which option he's talking about? I have not seen any options, it's misleading a chamber.
My advice, councillor Khan, on this one is how about we just let him talk for the three minutes and let it sort itself. All right, councillor, councillor Hooper, you can keep going. Thank you.
Uh, look, um, quite honestly, I think if we're going to be going down the track of supporting our community, whittling away our cash reserves is the craziest thing we can do. And this short sighted political exercise, I think will be seen for what it truly is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Hooper. There is no one else to speak by looks of things. We'll proceed to a vote. Whilst it's unorthodox for me to make a comment, I will make this comment. Uh, this vote will show who stands with workers and pensioners and who simply does not. Uh, we'll now proceed to a vote. Councillor Arn, you're first.
And Mr. Mayor, can I write to reply?
No, no right of reply. We will now proceed to a vote. Councillor Arn, you're first, please, for or against?
I'm voting for it.
Thank you. Councillor Hooper?
Voting against it, and thank you for those who are showing their colours.
Okay, councillor Khan?
I'm supporting it, and thank you for who's supporting that something, at least the community.
Councillor Khan, just a yes or no. I'm also voting in favour. Councillor Barlow?
Against.
Councillor Villa Gonzalo?
For, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Gibbons?
Against.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Maynard?
Uh, for, and I refuse your comments, Mr. Mayor.
Fair enough. Uh, councillor, um, Marcus?
I'm voting against.
Thank you. Councillor Shaw?
I'm for, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, division?
Uh, well, I would say that the division stands in terms of requiring everyone to, um, state their voting patterns. So first of all, I'll declare that it's carried, the motion is carried. Uh, in terms of the division, uh, councillor Barlow has called a division, it will be noted uh, in terms, I'm not going to articulate everyone to repeat it again, but it will be recorded who voted for and who voted against on the item. Okay, we're now going to revert back to the substantive resolution, that is, the resolution, uh, the motion that is now inclusive of, of that amendment. Uh, I understand councillors Maynard and Barlow moved and seconded. Uh, therefore, um, I assume councillor Maynard, you're still happy to move the substantive resolution? You're happy? Yes?
Unfortunately, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and I assume councillor Barlow will be still seconding? Yes? Yep, okay, great. Thank you. Okay, uh, councillor Maynard, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, very much, Lee. Uh, so, Mr. Mayor, uh, the 2021 Capital Works, uh, sorry, budget, uh, which has gone out for community consultation. Uh, certainly, I must say, the council has achieved an 83% delivery rate of the Capital Works budget in 1920, uh, which is a strong outcome given the disruption of the pandemic. Profit on paper, this is one of the things that's been alluded to previously by a number of people, Mr. Mayor. Profit on paper is only that, and that includes gifted assets when in fact actual budget surpluses, our budget surplus is, is approximately $2 million. You will note that council surplus position reported in the final 2021 budget is 158.4 million dollars. I would like to highlight that this is an accounting view of a surplus. It does not represent council's cash position for the year. As required under accounting standards, the 158.4 million dollars includes funds council expects to receive from developer contributions. It also includes attributed value of assets that are expected to be gifted or transferred to council. Both these categories impose a future obligation on council for the delivery of infrastructure and meeting the ongoing costs of maintaining our growing asset base. Excluding these two categories provides a more relevant underlying operational value, excuse me. Um, and it shows the financial position which council, of council results in a deficit for the 2021 financial year. The sports capital works completed, Mr. Mayor, is another highlight of the budget. And during the 2019, 2020 year, we have completed master plans for Brookdale Road Reserve, Windham Vale North Reserve, Churnside Park, Lorry Emmons Reserve and President's Park. This has placed us in a strong position to begin designing and delivering new infrastructure in those reserves in the years ahead. We've also completed the construction of the Churnside Park Oval redevelopment, Galvin Park Oval One, uh, a develop, redevelopment. A range of minor works as part of the sports facility program and the Lorry Emmons, uh, motocross civil works and the master plan more broadly. In addition, we've engaged with a range of sporting clubs to begin to design pavilion upgrades, and I was particularly pleased, uh, as was councillor Barlow, to recently see the works begin on the new Galvin Park soccer pavilion. Mr. Mayor, mentioning the hardship policy enhancement as a result of COVID-19, uh, I'd just like to say that earlier this year, council put in place a COVID-19 hardship policy to address the pandemic. This policy provides support for eligible rate payers through the deferral of rates for a period of six months ending 30th September 2020, of which I'm one as well. This policy will be reviewed and updated to ensure consistency with the adoption of this budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Maynard. Okay, uh, councillor Barlow, do you wish to speak to the budget?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go for it.
Um, very briefly, um, I'm not going to go through and pick out, I'm not going to cherry pick, um, different projects that we're planning for. Um, I'd just like to mention that, um, it's a, it's a lengthy process, um, in doing the budget. Uh, we commenced this process late last year, uh, and we're now talking about it in the middle of August, uh, in 2020. And, uh, a lot of work goes in, um, a number of meetings held, uh, morning meetings, the afternoon meetings, evening meetings, uh, emails, strategic meetings, uh, there's been, uh, it's never easy. Anybody that thinks that putting together a budget of $400 million is easy, uh, they obviously have probably never had to do it. And, um, and I must admit, I would like to personally thank the, the councillors, uh, for the hours that they've put into it. Um, the, uh, the staff who have gone above and beyond, um, what their duty statements would be in, um, actually sorting out all the questions and, and all the issues and, and now their job's going to be a little harder. Um, and I think that they deserve a pat on the back. Uh, they do, they do a great job and well deserved, um, what we pay them to do. Now, with, with a budget process, um, my biggest concerns are, and I know we've, it's been discussed, is that we're going, we're moving into a new paradigm of three-year-old kindergartens. And, um, and I think it's going to be vitally important that as a council, we actually are very careful about, um, the amount of money that we spend because we're going to need money to find, um, kindergarten space. We're going to have to find money to pay probably additional kindergarten teachers. I know that the state, this is a state government, um, uh, issue and we've, and we're going to wear it because we've got 23, we've got 23, um, kindergartens, I believe, at the moment. But we're going to need more because three-year-olds are going to go to kinder as well. And I think that this is probably going to be one of the biggest challenges that we've got as a council. Because when you take a lump of money out of a Capital Works and, um, and recurrent budget to spend on something that, uh, a year ago, we probably didn't even know about, um, it means that other areas are going to miss it. Either that, other areas are going to miss it, or we need to find more revenue. And because there are only two ways of making a profit, cut costs or increase revenue. That's been my forte in, in business life. It's the only way to, to make money. Now, uh, so as I said, I congratulate everybody on this, uh, but I think we've got much, much bigger challenges coming up into the future and, um, I, I am looking forward to it. Thank you.
Uh, thanks very much, councillor Barlow. Councillor Arn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it is great to see that we have included the funding for the active transport network project, the Ashcroft Avenue duplication project and the Horace Lane project. I think these three projects are important for improving Windham's connectivity, road congestion and road safety. I also note the local community had expressed concerns over the proposed William Sanding Library and Community Centre not being included in the budget at this stage. And I, I understand this is due to the movements in the commercial property market due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Senior council officers have confirmed that we are revisiting the business case and it could be reintroduced into the budget at a quarterly review. I understand the importance of this project for the William Sanding community. A community has no local access to some of the most basic public services and facilities for more than 10 years since the beginning of the development. This is simply not acceptable. Not blaming the council officers in this term, I know we have been working hard on this, but I'd like to see the relevant works being done and the project to be reintroduced into the quarterly review as soon as possible. I would also like to take this opportunity to highlight the importance of this project. And I think this is one of the projects that where the state government's growing sub refund should be go to urgently. Regarding council's rates, I want to clarify that due to the way properties are valued and the rates are distributed, the rates for, uh, 44% of the residential properties will actually reduce compared to last week, uh, last year. I want to thank all council staffs involved in preparing this budget, especially during this difficult time, and, and as well as the leadership demonstrated by you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Arn. Okay, do I have any other speakers for this budget? Please raise your hand. No? Uh, councillor Marcus? Thank you. You just on mute, Heather?
Now, we just have five minutes for this, don't we?
Yes, I'll grant you that, yeah. Thank you.
This, this is my fifth or sixth budget, and, um, I have voted against the budget once before, so I'm not quite sure at this stage. Uh, it's good to see that we will be spending 100 million on capital works, delivering infrastructure in our community needs, and it's wonderful to think that we've spent a record spend of five, 24 million on capital works over the last four years. And I have a list in front of me, which I won't go through, on the reconstruction of local roads and resurfacing and all that. But this is not my words, this is the council words. We anticipate a need to shift priorities in terms of our service mix to focus on pandemic response and recovery activities to support our community. Impacts on our council operations will be significant and will require a rethink of how we continue to deliver quality services in an unknown economic environment. However, council will continue with essential service delivery. Um, I think we're doing a wonderful job with our kinders, our maternal child welfare and our libraries, but one thing I must say, I am so upset every year I put forward our aged services people. And to think we're only putting forward 2.9 against many other figures, I think this is not a very good look for our aged people. As you know, many have passed in this last two or three weeks through the COVID, but there are many out there that do not have any council services. And we, we've had a couple of ladies who've had very poor experience. I did speak to Jenny today, and I will certainly be continuing to push to make sure our aged services, uh, people get what they deserve. My other concern is that we are in a pandemic and we have allocated 4.85 million in grants, uh, contributions and subsidies to be distributed to community groups. But apart from that, fine. But what I'm concerned about, Werribee has gone south. Alan Coler said that unless we can pick up, Victoria will drag Australia down and we will not be in a recession, we will be in a depression. And the big boys that have just gone is Zara. Uh, Nike are not. Nike are not producing much. So if those big guys are in trouble, what are our little people doing here? So we, I'll have to cut it short because I'll probably get cut off. 2022 is about survival and leave the daily complaints and anything else behind us. And so we must be very grateful to our business people because we go on, and I said it just a few minutes ago, we want jobs, jobs, jobs. But at the moment, we're not going to have jobs. We're going to have the highest unemployment in this city. So this council must look to support our small business people because on record, they employ more people than any other business and they are the most vulnerable. We anticipate a need to shift priorities in terms of our service mix, to focus on pandemic response and recovery, to activate, to support all of what we plan to do in the future. Impacts on our council's operations will be significant and I can't say that enough. I live and work with forensic accountants and business people and they are so worried because the future is unknown. But we want to be, we want to be positive. We want to be here to help bring our people out, but it is not going to be easy and we will need a united council and councillors so that we can be positive to help everyone come out of it. So we will have to rethink how we're going to do it. And we will have to, if we want to do that, to deliver quality services in an unknown economic environment. Now, the rate increases. Thank you. The rate increases. I am very sad that we at this stage still don't know what our rate increases are going to be. We're told 44% of the businesses will have a decrease. The valuer general has made us value all of our properties going back to January, which was very high. So when these rate notices come through, I think, well, you know, it's not going to be a very easy time for all of us because I know some of them are going to be very, very high. And again, that will hit the people that get absolutely no support. So in all, yes, half in favour of most, but in favour not of some of the others.
Thank you very much, councillor Marcus. You have five seconds spare. All right. Okay, next speaker, councillor Khan, you're next. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, can I say now, this is the last budget of this term. And, Mr Mayor, it's a great pleasure to be working with the other councillors. Look, I think it's important to know the numbers and since we're discussing on a budget. So, Mr Mayor, it's clearly a very good budget. Now, what we receive from the community, we receive 70% money, revenue from the public and now, which is $352.31 million. And that doesn't include, Mr Mayor, DCP contributions, non-monetary assets, capital grants, a net loss or a disposal of the property, infrastructure, plants and equipments, Mr Mayor. And expenditure, we spent, we gave $290.4.91 million in expenditure. So, Mr Mayor, is a quite positive in a way, the way the council is collecting revenue, the source of revenue we have. I would just like to say, Mr Mayor, how good the council have been responsible. And it's easy to criticize and easy to give a lecture and saying that, you know, I'm expert of that. And can I say that now $5 million? In response, straight away on 23rd of March 2020, we were the first, or one of the first council, we rushed quickly and we gave $5 million allocated for those ones who needed. Wyndham City Council's CEOs and staff and all of them, along with your leadership and other councillors, I think we took a right decision, we given, allocated $5 million and which has been, a lot of people, our businesses have been beneficially. However, though, Mr Mayor, I totally agree with the councillor Heather Marcus and previously she discussed about it, you know, today's hard voting for not to support a small contribution, I totally accept it. Today's contribution, she wants the more and I was always saying 10% in $100. But can I also say, Mr Mayor, before people making a comment and saying it's public and all the sort of this wording, you have to understand the numbers. If you can't even give a small $100, $50 and give it the biggest story, how good is it and how good is that? I think anybody, even an year student going in year seven can understand, something is better than nothing. And of course, your heart, Mr Mayor, and other councillor hearts, of course, always been open for the rate payers. This budget is absolutely a great budget in a present climate. No one knows, Mr Mayor, what's going to happen in stage four, how this pandemic will continue. But can I say that now, we're not irresponsible council. We are a pretty good council. We did knock back two noted motions, 10% rate cut, $100. And that was completely based on, hey, we need a clear man, numbers, we need a clear mathematics because we're adding. Today, I'm pretty much, Mr Mayor, with you and other fellow councillor who supported and understood what is a responsible budget means is, we clearly demonstrated today. Can I also say, Mr Mayor, this budget, it is not distributing money to the one part of the areas. Look at the budget now is have covered kindergartens, it covered, you know, children's services, mental health, grants, libraries, name it. I think this budget is a really great budget. In a present climate, Mr Mayor, no one knows what's going to happen in, you know, in a couple of months' time. But I'd just like to say that now Wyndham City Council should have a confidence and Wyndham City people, those watching this should have a confidence, we have distributed your dollar, allocated your dollar as the area is in need. Of course, there's more things need to come. And I totally agree with councillor Aaron Han saying that, you know, we need in Williams Landing, we need a community centre and a library. And I do understand, one day it will come, it will take a time. Now, I think this budget is excellent. And as councillor Peterman, I have said, that look at the budget in a road, Sais Road, Belane Road, number of budgets. So I think we have equally distributed in areas where community most needed. Mr Mayor, I look forward, I look forward working with you in a couple of weeks' time. If the situation gets worse or becomes more bad, of course, that's why the councillors, you've been elected, we can always go, bring another motion and can help our resident who still need more help. We're not discriminating anybody, what we're doing now, we're giving what we have. We are very poor, not rich at the moment, just put it this way, but we're giving something, not taking away people's money. Rather than not voting for somebody to giving is a sign of giving a people a pain, not a medicine, Mr Mayor. This budget is excellent, I'll be supporting it, Mr Mayor. And I also like to thank you, those who understand why we have allocated this sort of money in different areas. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Khan. Councillor Shaw, you're next. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I can't speak highly enough of this council and what under our CEO and her executive team, their leadership to respond to how we've done that as a community, as a council under COVID-19, under very difficult circumstances, you know. Once in a year pandemic, absolutely outstanding work. And I think they've done that again with this budget. It's been very well thought out. Councillor Barlow made a really good point as well, that a lot of work goes into this, not just from council officers, but from councillors as well, in terms of ensuring that we're actually putting rate payers' money where it needs to go. And I think over the last four years, we've done an excellent job at doing that consistently. So I actually think this is a good budget, considering the circumstances we face. But we must continue to deliver services and projects for our community. It's very important that we continue to do that. There's a couple I'd like to point out. There is the $200,000 in the budget for Hoppers Lane South project. So the scoping works for this will begin this financial year. And I know that's something that Werribee South residents and others that use that road have wanted that quite a lot. I'm also pleased to see money being included to finish two parks for our community, not completed on time for by developers. So it's great to see council picking up the slack there in finishing those parks for our community, parks that our people in our residents have wanted us to finish. Also, I know this has been a request for a while, but lights for the car park at Soldiers' Reserve, it's good to see that in the budget and do that. We will continue to deliver essential services for maternal and child health and immunisation, maintaining our infrastructure assets, youth programs and services, home care support to enable older people to live independently, city transport projects to improve accessibility and reactivation of playground parks, works that we've done over the course of the five years. And finally, just in relation to kinders, I think it's important to point out that including three-year-old kinder and our four-year-old kinder, the operations of those kindergartens are actually funded by the state government. But we do excellent work in that space as a council as well. I endorse this budget, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Shaw. Councillor Hooper.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I'm delighted to see the Point Cook Road, Sneed's Road, funding our part of it that we've put our hands up for, even though we don't need to. We've put up 50% again. So I seriously invite the honourable member, Jill Hennessy, to cough up her share of that and leave a letter to cut the ribbon. Because I know the people of our community, in Point Cook in particular, are absolutely sick and tired of that road intersection. It keeps coming up time and time again. We've got our funds, the state government, you know, guys, come on, kick in your part too. Another feature of the budget, which I'm absolutely proud to see, is at Lennon and Dunning's Boulevard, Lennon Boulevard, Dunning's Road, the road traffic lights for the T in the section right at the front of the school. Most people in the area will absolutely know that is a painful situation there for traffic and to see that that set of traffic lights are still on the cards is absolutely fantastic. But I am, look, to be honest, I am ambivalent about this budget, not because of the work of the officers, not because of what we've been doing, because of outside forces. The RBA, Reserve Bank of Australia, is talking about, well, this is the worst shock to our economy since the 1930s. Employment and hours worked is expected to decrease. Victoria is doing it absolutely tough. So to see, and then look, there's unemployment rate which is going up, see the gross domestic product is flatlined, if not going backwards because of Victoria specifically. So to see our officers actually able to put this budget together during this angst is something that is absolutely fantastic of their work. But it's, I wish it's, but as a final budget for my term on council, for my term on council in total, it's something I'm not, it's a crappy legacy. This is something that we've had to go through and try to develop something that our community can still get the services, still get the assets built in their community, but in such trying times, such uncertain times. And I'm hoping, hoping that people can see, you know, tonight and what we've been going through and recognise that there's a lot of hard work that's gone into it, there's a lot of uncertainty that the future holds and that all of us are doing our best to try to keep this ship afloat. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Hooper. We'll now proceed to a vote on the motion, the substantive motion as amended. Okay, councillor Arn, you're first.
Voting for it.
Thank you, councillor Hooper. Yep, councillor Khan.
In favour.
Thank you. I'm also in favour, councillor Barlow. Ball. Thank you, councillor Bill Gonzalo.
For him, Mr Mayor.
Okay, councillor Gibbons.
In favour.
Councillor, thanks. Councillor Maynard.
Ball.
Thank you. Councillor Marcus.
I will vote for, but I will have better discussions on what's not, what I don't believe is fair to our residents.
Okay, thanks. Councillor Shaw.
You're for, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. The item is passed. Okay, we'll now move to the next item, which is 6.3, sorry, item 6.3, Policy and Advocacy, 6.3.1, The Achievements on the Reconciliation Action Plan 2017 to 2019. The report's on pages 16 to 20, recommendation on page 16, attachments 21 to 30. Councillor Barlow is the mover. Do I have a second, councillor Hooper? Okay, councillor Barlow, do you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Actually, this is not like me, I'm reading from two prepared speeches. I probably, I might have gone for years without actually reading a prepared speech, but this is it. It is with great pleasure that I speak on this item, which provides an overview of the achievements of Wyndham City's First Reconciliation Action Plan. This RAP, as we call it, was adopted by our ordinary council meeting on the 5th of December 2017. Over the last two years, the plan has helped successfully drive a broad range of actions across the organisation in three key areas of building relationships, showing respect and improving opportunities for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples. The Wyndham Aboriginal Reconciliation Advisory Committee, RAC, which was established in 2016 and has played a critical role in both the development and the implementation of the RAP. I co-chair this committee with my co-chair, Tricia Williams, who is of Aboriginal background. Everything is 50/50 on this committee. And we've done this over the past four years. We have, she has provided a rich experience for my own reconciliation journey. I found the committee invaluable in their advice and insights. On behalf of council, I'd like to acknowledge and thank the committee in supporting the development and implementation of the RAP. I hope that a similar committee is put in place to support the development and implementation of the next RAP on the new council. This report highlights Wyndham's progress against the actions in the RAP and our strong position to further embed and build on our reconciliation commitments. It lists many important achievements. One of the most significant achievements has been the establishment of the Wungurul Durung Centre, meaning strong heart in the Wudurrum language. The centre is a multi-purpose facility that includes a dedicated Aboriginal community centre, neighbourhood community centre and integrated family centre. It's for the whole community. It officially opened on the 6th of November 2019. The development of the Wungurul Durung sits at the heart of the RAP as it has been built at every stage through a living partnership with a local Aboriginal community. Following council endorsement, this report will be made available on the Wyndham website for public viewing alongside a reflective piece sharing the stories of many of those involved in the journey. I would like to thank all of those involved. I look forward to council's continued work with the Aboriginal community to both address injustices and disadvantage and celebrate culture in order to build a vibrant, cohesive and respectful community inclusive of anyone. I would like to mention the committee members that have stuck through this committee thick and thin and have provided great, great working on this. There is my co-chair, Tricia Williams. We've got people of Aboriginal background, Brian Campbell, Kerry Deverall, Kerry Davidson, Robert Monahan. We have people of European background on this committee. As I said before, it is split 50/50. People like Margaret Campbell, Keith Patton and Mary Dixon, they've all done wonderful work. The council officers, and I'm not going to miss out on some I know, but Chris Mackay, Crystal Nadinos, Kerry Godbolt and Henry Tomases, or HP as we call him. These council officers have gone above and beyond their job description. I'd like to finish off by saying that even though at a council level, a lot of councils are doing great work in the reconciliation with our Indigenous people. However, I want to be very critical of the federal government who continue to put roadblocks in front of the communities in Australia. And I say this because they have announced going back a number of years ago, that before they do anything to the federal constitution in recognising the Indigenous people of this country, that each of the states and territories must have a treaty. Victoria is a long way down this treaty. They've started to do the treaty work in the Northern Territory and Queensland. South Australia were going down that track, but when the new government got elected, they cancelled their work there in that treaty. If we wait as Australians for each state and territory to actually work out a treaty with the local Indigenous populations, then we are going to still be sitting here in 100 years' time. And I don't see that it is of any advantage to the Indigenous people of Australia. The Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people deserve much better. Thank you.
Well said, councillor Barlow. Thank you. Councillor Hooper, your next three minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I'm absolutely proud to second this motion. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Look, I'm absolutely proud to second this motion. Um, one of the key items in the reconciliation plan is respect, as councillor Barlow has mentioned. And I think it's important that when we talk about Indigenous culture, realise it's varied and rich. The Indigenous of Broken Hill are very different to the Indigenous of Iwachuka, different again to the Wengarata mob and also down here with the Kulin nation. And to actually have our staff participating in cultural awareness studies, we've had a hundred staff as part of this reconciliation action plan, participate in cultural awareness studies specifically for Kulin activities, or broadly speaking, Kulin. So we understand our local nation people, not just Indigenous, how it actually speaks to the local people. And, well, that's not tokenistic, that's from the heart. And it's absolutely awesome that our Strong Heart Community Centre is at the centre of something that is really redefining the shape of how we treat our First Nation peoples locally. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hooper for that. Okay, we'll now proceed to a vote, uh, starting with you, councillor Ann.
For it.
Thank you, councillor Hooper.
For it.
Councillor Khan.
For it.
I'm also in favour of councillor Barlow.
Paul.
Councillor Villa Gonzalo. Councillor Villa Gonzalo. Thank you. Uh, councillor Gibbons. Thank you. Councillor Maynard.
Paul.
Councillor Marcus. Councillor Shaw.
For.
Okay, the resolution is passed. Thank you. We'll move to the next item, six point three point two. The response to the three-year-old kindergarten state government reform. The report's on pages thirty-one to thirty-eight, recommendation on thirty-two. Councillor Shaw to move it, uh, councillor Maynard to second. Councillor Shaw, you've got five minutes. Do you wish to speak?
Yep.
I do, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As discussed in the report, this state government-led reform is the most significant early education reform in Victoria's history. The evidence is clear that two years of kindergarten prior to school improve social, economic and educational outcomes for children. And for that reason, I support the intent of what this reform is seeking to achieve. However, in considering council's response to these reforms, there are several factors that need to be taken into account. We need to understand the market response, including the role that the long daycare sector may play. We need to listen to families to understand what they consider to be important in accessing three-year-old kindergarten in their community. We need to assess our current and planned infrastructure capacity to understand the gap that may exist. We need to analyse the financial impact for council if we want, if we commit to delivering this state-led reform. And we need to understand how the state government plans to deliver their reform for the benefit of Wyndham residents. As a family-friendly portfolio holder, I'm very interested in making sure that this reform responds to the needs and preferences of families. The market testing indicates that families are interested in local options, choice, small class sizes and affordability. We know that many families would choose to access three-year-old kindergarten in a long daycare setting, like they already do for four-year-old kinder and like I did for my son. However, we also know that for some families, affordability is a significant barrier and they cannot afford the long daycare fee. And for this reason, it is important that sessional options are offered so that every child has the opportunity to receive the benefits of kinder. My concern, however, is the cost impact for building the new rooms needed to meet demand for the delivery of the three-year-old sessional kinder. The state government has outlined an infrastructure investment strategy for the reforms, which includes the expectation of a co-contribution from council, like it already does for four-year-old kinder. With the introduction of this reform, the eligibility for infrastructure grants from the state government will be dependent on a commitment to deliver both three and four-year-old kindergarten from a facility. This leaves Wyndham City exposed to a shortfall in funding for planned four-year-old kindergarten infrastructure if we choose not to proceed with supporting the delivery of the three-year-old kinder reforms. We know that Wyndham will face significant shortfalls in infrastructure across the market as we approach full rollout of the reforms by twenty twenty-nine. We cannot afford to foot the bill for this additional infrastructure on top of what we already need to deliver. Maximising the level of state government investment in this infrastructure is critical to the success of the reform in Wyndham. This is a state government commitment. It should be the responsibility of the state government to ensure that the infrastructure adequately, adequately supports the service delivery. I support the intent of this reform to give every child the best start of life and I am keen to see a genuine partnership between levels of government to deliver this reform for Wyndham families. I recommend this motion to the chamber. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Shaw. Councillor Maynard is the second. Do you wish to speak?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to say upfront, uh, that I support what this, uh, reform is trying to achieve. However, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go further and say that kindergarten offers many benefits to children and their families and Wyndham has an exceptional track record of delivering quality services. In fact, I'm told by officers that we are more, most probably the biggest provider of, uh, kindergartens in Australia, if not, uh, very close to that, to that top. I am, however, concerned about the expectations of council in the delivery of this reform and I certainly concur with some of the comments that councillor Shaw has made in that regard. Let's be clear, this is a state government-initiated and led reform. As a growth council, we have significant, we have a significant pipeline of community infrastructure to deliver to meet community demands for services like kindergartens. And as we discussed in adopting the budget this evening, we don't have an endless bucket of money. And, Mr. Mayor, I might just say there that, uh, as we realise we don't have an endless bucket of money, we will most certainly be reviewing the budget going forward, as we, as we do with what occurs. In fact, we don't yet fully understand the impact the COVID nineteen pandemic will have on our council and our community. But it is likely to have a lasting impression on our financial position. In rolling out this reform, the state government is making grants available for infrastructure. But I'm concerned about the co-contribution from council, uh, that's required from council, as councillor Shaw has stated. This is their reform after all. And on top of that, they are also making our eligibility for grants conditional on providing both three and four-year-old kindergarten from a facility. So if we don't agree to support the state government reform, we miss out on funding we would otherwise have received to fund our infrastructure for four-year-olds. We need to make clear to the state government that once we build a new kindergarten, council has an obligation to meet the ongoing cost of maintenance and renewal. There are no state government grant schemes to cover those necessary costs. Again, I will say, Mr. Mayor, that this reform is a state government commitment and it should be the responsibility of the state government to ensure that the infrastructure is fully funded in the right places at the right time. That being said, I appreciate the partnership approach demonstrated, demonstrated by the state government through the kindergarten infrastructure and services plan and the partnership agreement. I am confident that through the CEO, our officers will work in good faith with the state government to get the best outcome for council and the community. That is why I commend this motion to the chamber. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Maynard. Councillor Khan, your next three minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say that as, as I think it, councillor Peterman and I have taken my words out of my mouth now, but I'd like to sort of make it clear that this is a state government, um, initiative and they, they want to do five hours a week. So it is, it's going to be five hours, at least five hours a week for the three-year-old kindergarten to the eligible childrens in Wyndham by twenty twenty-two. And then after twenty twenty-two, it will gonna scale up to the fifteen hours per week and that will be completed in twenty twenty-nine, twenty-nine, uh, twenty-nine. So I think we have to take it there and, and say that I think it's a great programme and that they're trialling in five hours a week. Now, definitely, it creates the challenges. Now, if you're trialling five hours a week and this is, trial's gonna go till twenty twenty-two, now that means that is a more need for the kindergartens. Now, Mr. Mayor, now my understanding is education is responsible to the state government, whether it's a primary, a secondary or kindergarten or, or a, a children. Right, this is a responsibility of the state government. Now, as I totally agree with my fellow councillors, clearly say that now we, I think the state government need to come up with a plan and give a money to those councils who's gonna have kindergarten. Now, Mr. Mayor, there's no secret about it. We are having eighty-five to ninety babies born every week in Wyndham. And that doesn't impact at a COVID nineteen, the growth is continued. But, Mr. Mayor, now things are people losing their jobs and things like that. I think it, it, it's gonna create a more pressure on the local governments such as Wyndham City Council and other local governments. I would like to say through your media, Mr. Mayor, through you, if the state government is listening, we need a fair share. Mr. Mayor.
Just a minute remaining.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The DC pays, the land tax, the rates, the land tax, this area is paying to the state government. I think they can look at, they can review the policy and can be brave enough, brave enough to fund this new project and we definitely would like to support that project. And it's a great initiative. And as, as, as councillor Peterman and I have said, that Wyndham City Council is one of those. And I did say that why? Because eighty-five babies born. So we look forward to now see a commitment from the honourable elected member of parliament, from the Tarnit, Wurribi and, and obviously Altona. I could not name them because I don't think so they live here. But we'd like to see that anyway, if they can, if they can fund this project and councillor Mayor Shaw has said that, we look forward to their support. Without their support, it's not gonna be work. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Khan. Councillor Hooper, you've got three minutes. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm not gonna need it. Look, um, I'm supportive of kinder. My kids have gone through it, but this is just crap. This is absolutely crap. The state government went to the election saying, we're gonna deliver three-year-old kinder. Um, look, great idea, bring it on. We've got a lot of members in our community that could certainly make, uh, use of that service. And yet our four-year-old kinder is now being held to ransom so they can, forcing us to fund their election commitment or part of it. It's absolutely terrible. Quite frankly, uh, so I'll be voting against this, not because I hate kinder, but because the state government, which promised to deliver three-year-old kinder, should be the ones bloody doing it, not us. Their promise, their election commitment, they deliver it.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councillor Khan. I think councillor Hooper has expired in terms of what he was saying, I think. So I think if that's okay, councillor Khan, we'll leave it at that. What, what is your point of order?
I think the councillor, uh, Hooper is, 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 is a, they're not talking to the point, not talking to the subject. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Khan. He's included his remarks, so we'll leave it at that. Okay, we'll now proceed to a vote. Okay, councillor, uh, or councillor Barlow, you just jumped in. I'll let you speak three minutes. Just on the, just down mute for me, though, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, I wasn't going to speak, but, uh, oh, jeez, I don't know. I might be getting grumpy as I get older, I don't know. Or I don't, anyway. Uh, look, um, my mother taught, uh, taught grade prep for ten years in a very poor Catholic primary school in Sunshine. And she always said to me, um, that, Henry, um, I've got forty kids in this class and you can tell the ones that go to kindergarten and the ones that don't. Because the ones that go to kindergarten are actually trained to, to sit, to listen, whatever. So the other ones come in, they walk around the room, they disrupt the class, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, she pumped into me at a very early age and I must admit, I did go to teachers' college for a year, but I found, I realised that wasn't my cup of tea. Um, that, uh, I think it's absolutely critical. You don't have to be a Rhodes Scholar to know the sciences of, uh, the importance of children learning uh, between, from the day that they're born to four years old. And in fact, my wife and I made an agreement that she would not have to go to work until the last child was, um, in grade one, which meant that she stayed home for over fifteen years looking after kids. And was it tough? Well, we talk about people doing it tough. You wanna send kids to school, pay school fees and do it all on one wage. Not, not easy. But, uh, it's absolutely critical. I was so happy to see that three-year-old kindergarten is going to be done. Who pays for it in the end will be negotiations between local government. And let's not forget, a lot of local governments do not have kindergartens. Do not. We're one of the few. We're one of the few. And that's our decision to be in kindergartens. If we don't wanna spend the money, then we get out. And I'm sure nobody wants to get out of kindergartens in the city of Wyndham. But I also want to say that what we're letting off scot-free is the federal government. Now, the federal government are also critical in all of this because every year we have to run an advocacy programme to get that extra five hours a week uh, for, uh, our, uh, kindergartens. Every year, we have hundreds of kindergarten staff, um, teachers' age or whatever you wanna call them. Don't know whether they're gonna have a job after the financial year, uh, because they leave it till the last minute to turn around and say, yes, we will actually keep funding the extra five. And if you know anything, and my daughter's been in the banking industry now for twenty-four years, uh, as a home loan finance manager and that. When somebody walks in and says, well, I've got a twelve-month contract, um, they find it almost impossible to get a loan. Find it almost impossible to get a loan because when you're on six-month contracts, twelve-month contracts, uh, who's gonna just give, who's gonna lend you money for thirty years when there's no guarantee you've got a job after twelve months? So I think, um, we wanna drag in, drag the feds in, yeah, for sure. We must deal with the state government and come to an agreement as to why we're, thank you, Mr. Mayor, why, why we should actually, um, you know, support this and, and let's sort it out. And let's sort it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that, councillor Marcus. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yes, well, I've always been very in favour of kindergartens. When I went back to school to teach, I had to take my son Timothy three months. He slept in his bassinet for the first year. When he was two, he sat in a school desk. So I know how hard it is for some mothers not being able to have kindergartens. When my Andy was due to go to kindergarten, he could not get a place here in Wyndham in those days. We have come a long way and I believe, and I think it was in two thousand and thirteen when, when I was the mayor, we advocated, I think it was Susan Lay, uh, pushing, we went to Canberra and the other, other states said, what are, what are you doing your own kinders for? We don't. So we never ever got any, any help and support for them. So, uh, you know, it's, I, I just hope there won't be any compromise for our four-year-old kindergartens, uh, because it is vitally important. I mean, I prep, I talk preps, so I know all about it. But in the country, all my preps that came through never ever went to kindergarten. But I did see my Tim, although he was at school from the age of three months till he was three and then he went to kinder. I could see the advantage that Tim had, um, but he was the little star in, with all the kids in the school at Valiant. But it is vitally important for our, our, our young kids to have that opportunity. Now, we must get it sorted out with the government because as one of, I think Henry mentioned, going into this pandemic, we have to know if they are going to have the money because they're going to have to find a lot of money to support jobs and businesses. So we just need, need to be extremely careful on how we're advocating to get them to make sure that we are not at, put at a disadvantage and then find ourselves in a lot more debt trying to, uh, put in the three-year-old kinders. Thank you.
Can't hear you, Josh.
Yeah, sorry, too. Um.
It's better now.
Okay, I think, sorry, my apologies. I'm just having some IT issues. Um, okay, uh, councillor Shaw, uh, you have right of reply given councillor Hooper was against. Uh, do you wish to exercise it?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Three minutes. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. So councillor Barlow did highlight our, um, campaign and he's absolutely right. And we will be strengthening our I Love Kinder campaign to continue to not only advocate for permanent funding from the federal government for our kindergartens, um, which is so vitally important, but also the cost needed from the state government. Um, this will not be the only issue or infrastructure programme or reform that we need to advocate to the state government for. And we will do that and we generally do it well. Um, I, I actually don't understand how you can vote against giving kids in Wyndham, three and four-year-olds, an opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, point of clarification.
Make space for lives and learn. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And be a kid, pretty much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Shaw. Councillor Khan, what is your point of order?
Is councillor Mia Shaw saying that is Tony Hooper is not supporting this, this emotion? And is, is avoiding it? That's not the point of order.
Point of order on councillor Khan, irrelevant part of the motion.
All right, okay, everyone, thank you. Uh, councillor Khan, that was frivolous. Don't, please don't do that in the future to keep the meeting going. It was evident that councillor Hooper was against. He indicated that, that enabled the right of reply to councillor Shaw. Okay, uh. Okay, councillor Shaw.
I've got a point of order though.
All right, enough. Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, we're proceeding to a vote now. Did, did you say you had a point of order, councillor Hooper?
The indication was I don't support three-year-old kinder, but I certainly do. I just don't think I'm for it.
Okay, I think you indicated you were voting against the resolution.
Yeah, we'll be voting against, so that's what.
All right, okay. All right, we'll proceed now, thanks, everyone. Okay, we're now voting, councillor Arne.
For.
Thank you, councillor Hooper.
Against.
Councillor Khan.
In favour, Mr. Mayor?
I'm also in favour, councillor Barlow.
Four.
Councillor Villa Gonzalo.
Four.
Councillor Gibbons. Was that four?
In favour, uh, four.
Thank you. Councillor Maynard.
A four.
Councillor Marcus.
In favour of the kinder, three-year-old kinder.
Thank you, councillor Shaw.
In favour, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, okay, the resolution has passed.
Mr. Mayor, call for division.
Councillor Khan, thank you, the division's noted, you've reflected.
It's on video.
Okay, we're moving to the next item, six point four point one, the Planning Permit Amendment, W Y P three seven three nine forward slash ten twelve. The Amendment to Condition Three of the Planning Permit to Extend Operating Hours to three A M. all days, an Amendment to Condition Six to refer to the kids' play area, and Amendment to the Endorsed Venue Management Plan to Accord with Changes to Conditions. The report is on pages thirty-nine to forty-nine, recommendation on page forty. Do I have a mover, councillor Shaw? Do I have a seconder? Okay, councillor Khan, thank you. Councillor Shaw, do you wish to speak to the item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, only to say that I support the officer's recommendation to, um, grant a notice of refusal.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Khan, as a seconder, do you wish to speak to it?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there's no other people in line to speak, therefore we will proceed to a vote.
I do, I do, I do.
Oh, okay, yes, councillor Marcus.
I'm very pleased, um, I'm very pleased to see the council officer's refusal to grant. Uh, I think it's been very evident through the pandemic that unfortunately, uh, gambling has risen to an all-time high. And it would be a hypocrisy of these councillors tonight to vote against the recommendation of the officers, um, when our policy is that we really don't want any more poker machines in the city. So that's all I have to say. So thank you for everyone that may vote, uh, for the councillor's, council officer's recommendation tonight.
Thank you very much, councillor Marcus. Councillor Barlow, you have three minutes.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I just wanted to clarify that, um, we're not talking about more poker machines, we're actually talking about extended hours. Is that correct? Yes?
That's correct.
Uh, that's okay. Uh, look, I'll be voting, uh, in favour, um, because, uh, to be honest, uh, the, uh, the, the, the slightly change, in my view, the slight changes in hours, uh, is not going to provide, um, too many extra jobs or, uh, more money. Um, I know people get poorly paid in those jobs, but I just don't see any, uh, any great value to, to our community or even to the people that are working there, that it's, um, that's going to provide more jobs. So, um, I'm definitely voting in favour of the, uh, of the, of the recommendation.
Thank you very much, councillor Barlow. There are no other speakers, we'll now proceed to a vote. Councillor Arne.
Four.
Councill, thank you, councillor Hooper.
Four.
Councillor Khan.
In favour.
I'm also in favour, councillor Barlow.
Four.
Thank you, councillor Villa Gonzalo.
In favour.
Councillor Gibbons. Councillor Maynard.
Four.
Councillor Marcus.
In favour.
Councillor Shaw.
Four.
Thank you, the item's passed. Six point five, other reports, six point five point one, the Growing Suburbs Fund, Proposed Projects twenty twenty twenty-one, reports on page fifty to fifty-two, recommendation on page fifty. Do I have a mover, councillor Barlow? Do I have a seconder? Councillor Khan. Councillor Barlow, do you wish to speak to the item?
Um, actually, Mr. Mayor, I, um, I didn't put my hand up. Is it still up? I'll lower your hand. Oh, that's all right. No, look, I'm, I'm, I'm in favour. Any, any money that we can get out of the state government, uh, is an absolute advantage. I'm definitely, definitely in favour of all the projects.
You say you're moving the item?
Yes, happy to move the item.
Okay, great, just making sure. All right, are you speaking to the item?
Uh, no, it's self-explanatory, yeah, we're after money, uh, and, uh, let's hope we, uh, let's hope we get all three of them, it'll be good.
Thank you, okay. Uh, councillor Khan, you're seconding it, yes?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, do you wish to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, look, can I say, look, as, as it clearly says that we're going to get something out of it, but it's quite disappointing. It used to be a fifty million dollar and now it's been decreased to twenty-five million. Now, can I say, Mr. Mayor, the word used, the word used, Growing Suburbs Fund, Proposed Project twenty twenty-one. If this is a growing suburb, why the money has been decreased by the, by the government? Now it's fifty million dollar, it clearly says on twenty-five million. So I'm happy that we're going to get something out of it, but can I say something? Six point five million dollar is not a much, we should be settling on it. So every resident of this great city, of this greatest suburb, should write a letter to the state government on what basis you decide fifty million dollar to decrease to twenty-five million. That's a fifty percent cut, Mr. Mayor. And can I say that now it's not self-explanatory? It is a serious issue, Mr. Mayor. We need money so we can fund the infrastructure. Now, it is not election campaign, it's a not election thing. It is important that we read and we vote for it. I know I want, I have the support in anyway, Mr. Mayor, but I'm extremely disappointed saying that twenty fifty million dollar to twenty-five million dollar and wipe out. The majority of the money get collected from the Wyndham City Council, from the Melton City Council and goes to the Growing Suburb Fund. We need more money, Mr. Mayor. You should be now speaking loudly with the government and saying that please don't cut. It should be hundred million rather than a twenty-five million. Very disappointed, Mr. Mayor, but definitely love to support it because something is better than nothing. So thank you very much and I will be supporting this motion. But the message should be cleared out to the Member Parliaments. This is not enough.
Yep, okay, thanks for that, councillor Khan. Okay, we're now proceeding to a vote on the item, councillor Arne.
In favour.
Councillor Hooper.
Four.
Councillor Khan.
In favour, Mr. Mayor.
I'm also in favour, councillor Barlow.
Four.
Councillor Villa Gonzalo.
Four.
Councillor Gibbons.
Over.
Councillor Maynard.
Four.
Councillor Marcus.
In favour.
Councillor Shaw.
Four.
Okay, we've done that item, thank you. Six point five point two, Governance Rules and Public Transparency Policy, uh, reports on page fifty-three to fifty-seven, recommendation fifty-four, attachments fifty-eight to one oh one. Do I have a mover, councillor Shaw? Councillor Maynard is seconding. Councillor Shaw, do you wish to speak to it?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, only that I also support, um, the recommendation of the new, um, public transparency policy, very important policy, uh, for councils to have in place. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Short and sharp, thank you. Uh, okay, um, councillor Maynard, do you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll be short and sharp, uh, as well. Uh, certainly, uh, uh, concur with councillor Shaw. Uh, both policies, uh, uh, well, uh, I commend them to my felt, my councillor colleagues. It is certainly, uh, a pity that, uh, that both state and federal governments are not, uh, bound to the same types of, uh, rules that local government is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Here, uh, are there any other speakers? Councillor Khan, three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I say, I think that that is a great document and is going to be, um, if it's get passed tonight, is we starting from first September, which is the next month, Mr. Mayor, which is covered, so it's just a good way of the community can understand how important is the Wyndham Meeting Protocols twenty thirteen, Governance Law twenty thirteen, Election Period Policy two thousand and nineteen, and, uh, you know, contrary, it's, uh, contrary interest and from the staff, from the councillors. So I think it, it, it's, it's good to see the public can understand. And I echo my, um, voice, as Peter Menon have said, that, you know, the local government is, is more transparent and highly regulated compared to the state and federal government. And I also say, Mr. Mayor, this is a great way of mentioning what election council policy, I just touch base where it covers. So if any council receive a money from the real estate boards or things like that, will be published on that council's website. So this policy will enhance now, and I know that previously how Wyndham City Council have been great, who received money from who, what donations received, that councillor Henry Barlow have received from the real estate donations were all listed, myself if I've received or not. So this, this policy powers all the transparency. What a great policy, Mr. Mayor, I was supporting, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that.
Talking to the motion, he mentions my name.
Take on, everyone, I'm going to need everyone, please, there needs to be an element of discipline here. Okay, uh, councillor Barlow, I'll start with you, please advise your point of order. Councill, councillor Barlow, hand movements is not a point of order. Do you have a point of order? I can't hear you.
Yes, uh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, yeah, like point of order. Uh, I don't understand why my name gets used with, uh, real estate boards because at the last election, at least I didn't put them on public property.
All right, councillor Barlow, that is completely an abuse. In the same way, I told councillor Khan earlier, you can't do that. It's frivolous. I'm not going to accept the point of order, we'll keep going.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, my, my point was this is a great way of transparency, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't mean to, don't mean to point out, but it's a great way of transparency. It should be compliment to the councillor Henry Barlow, rather than taking a negative moment to you.
Councillor Khan, are you concluding your remarks?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, this, this policy covers all these great areas where people can think, think. And, and also though, if any, any councillors who, who is not doing proper jobs and things like that, on being contrary interest, people can make complaints and things like that, Mr. Mayor. And that is all about discussing. I'm sure, Mr. Mayor, if anybody is now, we're all councillors go through the hardship and, and through this policy, we all, all, this is all about governance, a great governance and transparency. Mr. Mayor, I wish, I wish that everything can be go online on, 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 on website. So, you know, the people on the assets and give donations and people can see that. And that is all great way of transparency, Mr. Mayor. There's nothing to be hide, there's nothing to be, think about and thinking, you know, it, it, it is, it's why NEM has been mentioned and things like that. It's a great way of transparency, Mr. Mayor. We're proud to be Wyndham City Council's governor's policy and the public transparency policy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Understood, thanks very much, councillor Khan for that contribution. Councillor Hooper, your next three minutes.
Uh, look, I think the transparency feature is absolutely fantastic and sort of echoing, um, councillor Maynard's comments about the amount of scrutiny that we're under. With the local government act two, what's coming in is the ability to recall. Wouldn't it be nice if the state and federal governments had that feature as well? More comment than, um, that, than the actual policy itself, Mr. Mayor.
Is that the conclusion? Uh, so that's everything? Okay, thanks for that contribution, councillor Hooper. Okay, we're going to proceed to a vote now. Uh, councillor Arne, um, are you speaking? Uh, sorry, are you in favour or against the motion?
Yes, for it.
Okay, thank you, councillor Hooper.
For it.
Councillor Khan. Councillor Khan, you must.
In favour, in favour.
Uh, yes, I'm also in favour, councillor Barlow.
Four.
Councillor Villa Gonzalo.
In favour, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Gibbons.
Over.
Councillor Maynard.
Four.
Councillor Marcus.
In favour.
Councillor Shaw.
Four.
Okay, thank you, councillors, we are getting through the items. Okay, six point five point three, the councillor expense report from one January to thirty June twenty twenty, reports on one oh two to one oh four, recommendation one oh two, attachment one oh five, councillor Shaw is the mover, councillor Arne is the seconder. Councillor Shaw, do you wish to speak to the item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Arne, do you wish to speak to the items, the seconder?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, we'll proceed now to a vote. Uh, councillor, um.
No.
Yes, uh, for it.
That's, okay, two seconds. Uh, I'll let you, uh, speak councillor Marcus for three minutes, but I'm going to be clear for any future.
No, sorry, not quick enough. Um, I, I have disputed my cost, um, because, and I, the council officers would come back to me, but unfortunately they did not come back and today I just wasn't available. And, but he did not come back to me, okay?
So councillor Marcus, are you voting for or against?
No, I'm voting, but I believe the amount beside my name is totally incorrect.
Uh, well, it's, okay. I'm just going to take that as a, a contribution, um, with a view for you to ultimately determine which way you're voting.
Um. I'm voting for it, but what I'm saying, there should be a correction because I don't believe that the amount of money listed by my name is the total, um, amount.
Okay.
It should be like.
All right, um, thanks for that, councillor Marcus. Uh, okay, um, no other. So I'm now going to proceed to a vote. Okay, councillor Arne.
For it.
Okay, thank you, councillor Hooper.
Four.
Councillor Khan.
In favour.
I'm also in favour, councillor Barlow.
Four.
Councillor Villa Gonzalo.
Four.
Councillor Gibbons.
Over.
Councillor Maynard.
Four.
Councillor Marcus.
In favour.
Councillor Shaw.
Four.
Thank you, that item is now dealt with. Item number seven, notices of motion, nil. Item number eight, council seal, nil. Uh, sorry, uh, six, eight point one, I apologize, uh, instruments of delegation from council to CEO and staff, the reports on one oh six to one oh nine, the recommendations one oh seven, it's printed in a separate attachment, uh, one one twelve to two oh five. Councillor Maynard is the mover, do I have a seconder? Uh, I'm going to take councillor Shaw, she's raised her hand. Okay, um, councillor Maynard, do you wish to speak to the item?
Uh, I think it's, uh, self-explanatory, Mr. Mayor, but, uh, just in, 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 uh, uh, recognition of the fact this is a result of the, uh, the new act and, uh, this is the reason for the, uh, for this, uh, item to come to the chamber in this matter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Maynard. Councillor Shaw is the second, do you wish to speak?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, okay, councillor Khan, your hand has been raised, are you speaking?
No, Mr. Mayor, I was just trying to second it anyway, thank you.
Okay, no problem, thanks for that. Okay, we're now proceed to a vote. Councillor Arne.
Four.
Councillor Hooper.
Four.
Councillor Khan.
In favour.
I'm also in favour, councillor Barlow.
Four.
Councillor Villa Gonzalo.
Four.
Councillor Gibbons.
Over.
Councillor Maynard.
Four.
Councillor Marcus.
In favour.
Councillor Shaw.
Four.
Okay, that resolution is also passed. Okay, that resolution is also passed. Item eight point two, the awarding of contract C triple two eight forward slash nineteen, the supply of geosynthetic materials for the construction of cell six. Reports on one one, one hundred and ten to one thirteen, recommendation on one one zero. Do I have a mover? Councillor Maynard and councillor Khan is the second. Councillor Maynard, do you wish to speak to the item?
I do, Mr. Mayor, but very briefly. Uh, this just goes to, to show the amount of work that this council does in forward planning in anticipation of future needs and especially at the refuge disposal facility. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Maynard. Councillor Khan, do you wish to speak as the seconder?
I, yes, Mr. Mayor, I think it's important to mention what councillor Peter Maynard have said, that the council is doing a lot of work in order to sell six, which is RDF, a part of RDF. And this contract is one point one, uh, one point one plus excess of the million dollars contract. So it's important now, but this material need to be purchased. So I think we're doing the right things, making sure that things get done on time and they won't fall, won't fall behind. So I will be supporting it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Khan. Uh, there are no other speakers, so therefore we'll proceed to a vote. Councillor Arn.
For.
Thank you. Councillor Hooper.
For.
Councillor Khan.
In favour.
Councillor, oh, sorry, I am in favour too. Councillor Barlow.
For.
Councillor Villa Gonzalo.
For.
Councillor Gibbons.
Over.
Councillor Maynard.
For.
Councillor Marcus.
In favour.
Councillor Shaw.
For.
Thank you. That item is passed. Item nine, uh, contract summary, nil. Item ten, questions with notice from public gallery. Madam CEO, are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have one question this evening. It's regarding a planning matter. So, Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence, I'll actually need to read out the detail of the question and also the response. So just bear with me whilst I do that. The question is from, uh, Mr. James Hunt and it relates to planning application W Y P one two, one two three forward slash twenty. Um, question reads, Mr. Mayor, I'm wanting to please ask why the planning application address eighty-eight Deramet Road, Hoppers Crossing was suddenly refused after the planning officer had written a recommendation for an approval following seven months of productive consultation. We just want to understand why the notice of refusal was suddenly issued outlining items that were not previously raised in any correspondence specifically in the internal referrals. Why was the matter set for tonight's meeting as indicated by the officer and not given the due process for the councillors to vote? The development of the existing DiCaprio restaurant into a new restaurant and convenience shop and fuel station will provide approximately two hundred jobs to the community in a time when it's most needed. Please allow this matter to be reconsidered or reviewed and avoid the costly and exhaustive V cap process. So, Mr. Mayor, the response is as follows. Uh, taking into consideration the comments from the internal departments across council, the opposition was really around the application, um, sought a range of, of issues um, around the sort of application really being at odds with a number of those policy provisions of the Wyndham Planning Scheme. Um, we can certainly provide advice back to the applicant detailing what those were. Um, however, accordingly, in line with the level of officer delegation, an application can be refused at an officer level if it's deemed to be at odds with policy, even if the number of objections exceeds fifteen. Um, a meeting with the council officer, applicant and owner is scheduled for Wednesday, so that being tomorrow, Mr. Mayor, the nineteenth of August, uh, to discuss the options of appeal. So those details in terms of the issues, I guess, vague, um, and subsequently addressed by each of those members of council teams across the departments will be outlined in that meeting and then subsequent response, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. That's the only question this evening.
No, okay, great. Uh, thanks, Madam CEO. Item eleven, councillor delegates reports, uh, there are nil. Uh, item twelve, urgent business, also nil. Thirteen, confidential business. Uh, can I have a mover to, to close the meeting to the public in order for council to consider confidential business? Councillor Maynard.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, I move that pursuant to section sixty-six, one and two, part A of Local Government Act twenty twenty, this meeting of council will be closed to members of the public in order for council to consider confidential matters.
Thank you, councillor Maynard. Do I have a second to councillor Khan? Now put it to a vote, although, uh, my apologies, councillor Arn.
Yes, for it.
Okay, councillor Hooper.
For.
Councillor Khan.
In favour.
I'm also in favour. Councillor, sorry, councillor Barlow.
For.
Councillor Villa Gonzalo.
For.
Councillor Gibbons.
Over.
Councillor Maynard.
For.
Councillor Marcus.
In favour.
Councillor Shaw.
In favour.
Okay, with that passed, we'll now wait for the disconnection uh, of the online feed and to then proceed into confidential business.